I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, April 1st, 2019, at 9:00 AM to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Approval of meeting agenda.
Making motion to approve an agenda as presented. Second.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Donald. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Excuse me, are we taking the one thing off new business?
Item F, yes. Sorry, I will revise my motion to amend the agenda, removing item F under new business.
Second. Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any other revisions, additions? Questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion passes. Thank you. Approval of minutes 3:04, 2019; 3:20, 2019.
I will make a motion. We approve the minutes of 3:04 and 3:20, 2019.
My second. Motion by Treasurer Donald, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion passes. Thank you. Public announcements. Are there any public announcements at this time? No public announcements? Any public comment this time? Yes, please. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Jessica Poposo, 62924 Bates Road in Lenox.
Morning.
Morning. I'm here because I want to have repaired on the 29 Mile Road with the limestone and everything. And the road is a disaster. I have pictures and emails all the times. I've called Township and Macomb County Roads to have the road fixed. My children ride the bus, very hazardous. I've even been called by the bus garage to say they won't come down the road to pick up the kids a few times this year already. The use of the road with garbage trucks going up and down it, trying to get to the dump, the substation that's west on Omo, or west on 29 by Omo, the semis that go up and down, they're just deteriorating the road. And the wear and tear on vehicle and the public safety of going up and down the road. So I'd like the road to have limestone on it and be taken care of. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Marion Hilton, 30225, 29 Mile Road, Lenox. Good morning. I'm complaining also about putting limestone on the road and the cleaning up of the ditches. You can't even pass two cars on 29 just west of Haven Ridge because of the growth over the roads. You hit the brush in the ditch. It is ridiculous. The limestone, the road is terrible because of all the brush on the south side of 29 Mile Road. It just doesn't dry out ever. And the road has a dip. It dips like this rather than like this, like all the rest of the roads in Macomb, or most of them, especially on the west side. They all go like this. Ours goes like this. It's terrible. It's very dangerous for people. I've been out there 33 years, and I've never seen it so bad in the last five years. So.
Thank you.
That would be it, just cleaning up the ditches, too. Thank you.
Very much. Under public comment, I would just like to comment on those items just for informational purposes. Over the course of the last month, we've had three meetings with the head of the road commissions. Last one just took place last week, too. We are faced with time of year with frost coming on the ground and weather conditions to deal with, but also we do realize that the roads are not in good shape. We instructed our engineer and our DPW superintendent to go out and evaluate all of our dirt roads, which we did. We have a limestone preservation map that shows where all the limestone has been placed that we started years ago, what year that it's been placed from starting point to end point. We also are doing this with ditching now and condition of road. We've met with them. I want to let you know we have zero jurisdiction over the roads in Lenox Township. Macomb County Road Commission is solely responsible for our roads, and they are instructing us with any concerns or complaints to please call them directly. And I question that because we get feedback that nothing's being done. They're telling us they log the calls, and that way they can keep track of what needs the most attention, where the issues are. So I just want to make that very clear. We don't have the final say-so. With our limestone, we can recommend three miles a year. That's what we're contracted for. We actually give one extra mile. Typically, two miles, we ask for an additional mile. We asked our Public Safety Service, our EMS, our DPW, and our fire department to kind of give us the best idea where the most impact is needed, and that's how we evaluate. But I just wanted to give that information out. We are on top of it. We are really pushing to get the most we can, and we are setting up things in place for checks and balances on it. Would you like to comment again?
Yeah.
Sure, please.
I have talked to, I mean, I have a list of all the times that I've been here and called Macomb County Roads or whatever. I've talked to Jeanette. I was in here last June. She showed me the map. She pointed out the roads that usually are done. I question who here drives the roads to know. You know, like, I guess it wasn't explained. I've been in here numerous times.
But what I'm saying is, we do not have jurisdiction over the roads, other than limestone, other than limestone getting its saving. We have zero jurisdiction on the roads. It's Macomb County Road Commission.
I guess then that wasn't explained properly, or Jeanette did not explain that properly, because I've been questioning this since last June. I call Macomb. I have emails that she-
Were you ever instructed by her to call the road commission?
I have emails that I sent her. She told me to call Leo.
Yes, that's-
I mean, he did not return my phone calls. He did not return my email.
That's feedback that we need, then. When that takes place, what our instructions, and I've had Trustee Clifford sit on the meetings, other board members, our instructions are very clear from the county, because, trust me when I tell you, we call and complain. They ask specifically for our residents to call them because they log them in, and that way they are held responsible. We can say, hey, this resident, like yourself, called in. We're getting told that they're not getting any action taken. That's where we can come in and get on top of that, too. We had a two-hour meeting last week with our DPW director, supervisor Trombley, myself. I formerly worked with the road commission in traffic cycles, not roads, so it's all me. But anyway, we tried to get to the bottom of it and get some things straightened out, and like he said, we are very much on top of it. And we'll be taking direction from our fire chief, our DPW director, and all the different, our ambulance director, Mr. White, about where the limestone should be placed next.
Okay. I guess I have another thing. Who, if I'm not getting Macomb County Roads to actually comment back on the stuff that I am a Macomb County resident, I want stuff picked, then nobody will respond to me. Do you guys have a better option for me to call or somebody else to call there, or-
Yes, we'll have another number today. If you can log the times you've called or give us an approximate, that way we'll tip right to the top guy right now.
Okay.
And then let him respond to it.
And I also have photos and anything else if you guys want to copy something. I brought it all today.
Absolutely.
All right.
I can assure you, the meeting that Trustee Clifford's talking about was not a pleasant meeting we had with them.
Okay.
We're frustrated as much as our residents. We drive the dirt roads every day. I drive the dirt roads every day. So does our employees. We see what's going on. We've called them to the carpet on it, but it's very frustrating when you have no say-so. We have no say-so in their manpower or resources. We can only complain. With you complaining, that's what helps us, especially if you go through the proper procedure of calling the road commission, because like they've told us, and Trustee Clifford will testify to this, they say they log every call in. Every call is logged in.
They do, even for my-
I've taken names, times, dates. I have it all also, so I mean, if that's what actually happens, I guess I'm just looking, it's hard to get an answer or somebody to tell you a reason why, even though nobody's ever going to return here.
Do you leave us your records or a copy, which you added, whoever? That's going to help us, because then we got documentation of when this happened.
Okay.
And it was another meeting the other day. We've been putting up with enough.
Okay. I will be more than glad to have the meeting.
But I assure you, it's one of our highest concerns.
Okay.
And like so with the limestone, public safety is always first and foremost important. So sometimes it might not seem where the limestone's going, where it has the biggest effect on the population with their travel routes. And we have to make sure these guys can get to and from calls in the quickest, most fast, safest time they possibly can.
My children on the bus, too. I mean, when that bus is fishtailing and people won't even come pick up my kids. I mean, that's a major concern to me.
I understand. And not to defend them, we're not going to get a clear look at our roads here probably for, I'm going to say, another month, until everything comes out of the ground, all the frost comes out of the ground. We're really going to get a good status report on what's happening. We'll be able to see more, and that's our plan right now. By, I think they said, middle of July, they should have had the best conditions ever to get our roads back in shape. And that's crowding, ditching, things of that nature. They're telling us they do not have the funds or the resources to do a lot, but we're going to set them on a path where we're going to check their work and make sure they're doing what they're doing. We've tried this, established a little program to follow, basically, with them.
Okay. I would definitely double-check on 29 Mile Road, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am? Any questions?
If I meant to mention about the dump trucks coming down 29, too. We've seen a lot more traffic. They're cutting through, and I know they're not supposed to do that, so I would like-
Wasting waste management trucks?
Yes, waste management trucks. We've seen a lot more on 29.
Any traffic on the road that's of a concern to you, what I would ask you to do, especially if you feel it's of a legal nature? We do not control the traffic on the road. The Macomb County Sheriff does. So if you have something like that taking place, if you would call and lodge a complaint, and once again it gets logged in, they'll check it out.
Okay.
We do not monitor the roads as far as traffic.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. No other public comment? Number seven, consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public so requests and/or prior to the meeting in which event the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under agenda item number nine below. Approval of consent agenda shall be by a majority, roll call vote of those present voting.
I have orders and bills this morning totaling $2,344,776.6. Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the orders and bills in the amount of $2,344,776.6.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Treasurer Donald. Any other questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Gurley.
Aye.
Donald.
Aye.
Candell.
Aye.
Clifford.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. No items removed from consent agenda. Number nine, unfinished business. Letter A, Fire Department Commercial B Schedule Modification Request.
I would like to make a motion to table this item as I didn't get as far on a scheduled comparison as I thought I would at this time, so I'd like to schedule it until next, table it until next month, please.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Donald. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion passes. New business. Letter A, Fire Department Purchase Proposal, Grass Firefighting Unit. Morning, Chief.
Morning, everyone. In my letter to the board, it indicates one of the items under capital L to be worked on or replaced this year was the replacement of the 20-year-old grass slide-in unit. What it is, basically, it is a slide-in unit that is bolted to the bed of the pickup truck for going off-road for grass firefighting. Current unit is 20 years old, and it's in rough shape, to say the least. And I informed the board last fall that I received, and we were awarded a grant from the Department of Natural Resources that I put in for, and that was specifically to help offset the cost of the grant, or correction of the slide-in unit. So on my letter to you, it lists three companies that I've requested cost analysis from, in quotes, and you'll see the first one is in Rochester, Minnesota, at $16,445. Site One Landscaping from Clinton Township is at $10,930, and they're the ones that provided us our current unit 20 years ago. And then Apollo Fire Equipment out of Romeo, which is a regular fire department vendor for us, came in at $78.68. Subtract the $32.50 of the grant amount. Our out-of-pocket cost is only $46.18, and I had budgeted $10,000 for the project.
So what's your recommendation, Chief?
My recommendation is that we award the quote to Apollo Fire Equipment.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Chief, you know, I'm going to accept your recommendation, but I don't understand, from 16 to 7, what's the difference?
Well, one thing, when you start going out of state and out of the area, costs go up. Shipping costs are tremendous. And this is a company that does this not primarily, it's not their primary business, but there's very few companies that do these, and they're very similar to a fertilizer sprayer. In fact, that's really what it is. It's a glorified sprayer. But there was nobody else at all that I could find in the state of Michigan to get a closer quote call, so.
Were you happy with the one from Site One that you've been using?
We got 20 years out of it. We were very happy with it, but we're also happy with all the work and equipment that we get from Apollo for 30 years, so that's why I'm recommending that we go with Apollo and, you know, right Romeo. So, and it's a big cost difference for us, and cost savings, really. And then we're going to put the other one up. We'll put it up on eBay and let go for sale and see what we can get for it. So we've already taken pictures of it. One of the sergeants is taking the project on and put it up for sale.
I'm good. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we follow the fire chief's recommendation to use Apollo Fire Equipment for the purchase of the grass, what is it, truck bed slide-in in the amount of $4,618.
My second. Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any other discussion, questions? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Candell.
Aye.
Clifford.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Donald.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. Letter B, 2019 Dust Control Program. DPW. DPW, also, you're going to be next here. Mind if we take a moment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
On the road commission-
Hold the mic closer, please.
Road Department.
Thank you.
Road, I'm sorry. Calcium chloride, the county gives us two applications every year, and if we want more, we can either choose them or go with Road Maintenance Corp. The cost is just a little bit different. The application itself is the same, 3,000 gallons per mile.
I believe last time what we did was we took the two applications, we approved two additional applications. We had discussion with the county of not hiring them, but hiring Patricia Eisenhower to do the applications.
First two applications with the county is one in May and one in mid-June. We usually do two more until end of July and-
Right, as needed, is what we did before.
And if we pay for the two extra, we get credit back if we don't use them.
And just for the record, too, the last time, and for the residents in the audience, for dust control, we contracted with the county. We had two proposal bids, one from the county and one from the company Patricia.
Road Maintenance.
Road Maintenance. We contracted with the county, thinking they would know our roads better, be closer for weather incidents, not apply downpour, things of that nature. They had turned, contracted with the other company. So there's no use in contracting with the county on this.
On the extras and applications? Correct. Road Masons does work alongside the county for when the roads are graded.
That's who they hire.
Yeah.
Basically.
So she will, you know, she won't put out an application and not have it graded. You know, she'll do the right job, too.
Correct.
We use her legislature.
Right. But what we did, the one here, we get two bids to come in, one from the county, one from her. Well, if we hire the county, they're going to turn around and hire her. The county was typically more money.
Right.
So why not-
So we don't pay her during the winter.
Correct.
For the extra. They're doing, you know, the two that we have to do with the county.
Correct. But I'd like to maintain the dust control as much as possible, especially with, hopefully, the maintenance we're going to receive this year on the roads after the previous meetings we've had. I want to make sure we keep up our end and keep the dust down as much as possible.
All right. I have a two-part motion here. I would like to make a motion that we accept the dust control program through the county for the first two applications that they provide. And the second part of my motion would be that we contract with Road Maintenance Corporation for a possible two additional applications as needed.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Gurley. So what we're doing, typically, most township get two applications per year. We're authorizing two more applications on top of that. Depends on the weather conditions, what's happening with our roads, but we'll have two others in reserve to take place if the conditions hold.
In our budget, we'll support that.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
How much area is that covered with applications?
We have the total mileage.
54 mi, 54.4 miles.
For each application?
Gravel roads.
No, for, yeah, for each application. Those are all our gravel roads.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. Thank you. 2019 Limestone Program.
Okay. The county gives us three miles at a 10% cost to us, and they pay the 90%. And I will turn it over to Cam to talk about the three miles.
Thank you. Yeah, just for informational purposes, this is a 10% expense to the township. We're offered two miles with the possibility of an additional extra mile purchase, which we take. Our total cost for each mile is 10%, so we have three miles each year to do. Your recommendation, sir?
Well, I recommend that we continue to be a part of this program as far as indicating which three miles. I don't have three miles to indicate to you at this time. As you mentioned previously, we just did a total assessment of every gravel road we have in the township. Problem with that is, when we did the assessment, to pick three roads wouldn't have been fair because they were in such poor shape. The road commission has done a significant amount of work since we've done that assessment. Frost is still coming out of the ground, so I would like to postpone giving them three miles, which three miles we want done, until a later date once the frost is completed. But I would like you to approve the three miles for purchase right now, which is having 90/10 cost sharing with the county.
This is what we've done in the last two years also, given, you know, the exact miles.
And just for information, those applications don't take place typically till the summer end.
Yeah, maybe late summer.
Okay.
So us holding this up is not going to prolong us getting the limestone done.
We need to see the true condition of the road once frost comes out.
Correct.
Yeah, I see we were supposed to respond to this by March 28th. You'll have to-
And I don't know why the last few years they've asked for this way, way early, when you can't give a fair assessment of the roads. They're still frozen.
Oh, I agree. And what I'm saying is, we probably have to tell them we're going to delay the, you know.
Yes, and we did, you know, I did speak with Leo about this the other day when we had that meeting. You know, that is kind of ridiculous when they want this information.
I'm good. And you have information on 29 Mile Road, too, that we'll check out for implication purposes?
Yeah, I would just like to get the exact location of where you're speaking of.
Okay.
Just, I'll be with you after the meeting.
I have a question.
Sure.
When you guys dictate the three miles-
We have the option.
When you dictate the three miles that you guys pick to put limestone on, do you just look at the map and just pick by, like, year that it had it last, or, I mean, who travels the-
No, as I said before, go ahead, everyone.
If I say I can tell you, I do drive every road every year before we have to give this three miles. Part of that assessment that I do is I look at the traffic costs that are provided to us from Suncocks, which, that's how I know how many vehicles go up and down that road. How many houses are in that stretch? Is it a main thoroughfare? When was the last time it was done, if it was done? So there is kind of a methodology, per se, that I use to say, I think these three miles deserve it the most. Ditching does play into it, too. If ditching is non-existent, it's not going to do me any good to put all that money gravel down if it's just going to continue to flood. And that's where we have to work with the county to make those improvements before we can improve the road.
Can I tell you, our DPW superintendent and our engineer went down every single dirt road and monitored every ditch, everything, in the last couple of weeks, and they're still going to continue to do it to make sure, this year more than ever. But I still need your complaints going to the road commission. That's what helps us. So, please. Thank you. Okay. You approve all the three miles, please, determined by DPW superintendent?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application of limestone in the amount of $22,275, which is the 10% township share. The three miles to be indicated later per the DPW supervisor's request. My second.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any other discussion? And just before we vote, I do have one more discussion. One thing that was talked about is, and a serious strategy, because of the condition of our roads and the height of our roads and the not being crowded properly, we might condense some of these miles to make sure it's done correctly. And we feel in most cases it hasn't been done correctly in the past. So we might have to shorten up a little bit of distance to make sure it's done correctly because of the need of material on some of these roads. Some of these roads are landing six to 12 inches in height. So that was one of the things we discussed, correct?
That's correct.
Everybody knows, yeah.
If you needed more limestone to fill it in, what he's saying, we just, we'd have to shorten that miles up because we're only allowed so much, at six inches or-
We're only seeing more material per mile.
Per mile.
So we might shorten that up to increase the material per mile, and we would just want to make sure from this point on, whatever's being done is being done correctly. We're tired of Band-Aids being put on stuff. So that was the main point of discussion we've had with them. We're tired of substandard work that it has to be done correctly. So, do you agree with that statement?
Oh, absolutely, I do.
You were there also. You were there also. All right. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Lennox Township Library Maintenance Service Request.
This is typically something that we discuss every time this time of year. Unfortunately, I have not received anything from the director over there. But I would assume that she would like to continue the lawn and snow service. What's your recommendation? So at this time, I would say to approve the lawn and snow service for the next year at the same cost.
Okay.
You know what that is?
$6.15. I believe it's $6.15.
Whatever the previous year's cost was.
Correct.
Okay.
Need a motion, please?
Okay, I'll make a motion. We continue to do the lawn maintenance for the Lennox Township Library?
Correct. A second.
And snow also?
Is it just lawn and snow or just-
Yeah, we do them both together because otherwise it seems like we're right back up here talking about it again.
Okay, lawn and snow.
Thank you. Motion by Treasurer Honald, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any other discussion?
I would just think that we'd like to make the motion to state that it's at the same rate as last year. So there's no question later.
All right, you'll lend your motion to that statement. Okay. Including the statement that the cost to be the same as last year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Letter E, Lennox Township Parks and Recreation Plan Authorization Request. Morning, Mr. Cass.
Morning. The Department, Michigan Department of Natural Resources provides yearly grant funding for parks and recreation improvements, facility improvements, land acquisition. One of the requirements is that each community has to have an approved five-year Parks and Recreation Plan. Ours has recently expired. There is a procedure that the state requires you to follow in adopting a new one, which involves public hearings, data collection, notification of property owners, notification of Semcox surrounding communities. There's a lot of steps that need to be undertaken in order to complete it. The, in order to qualify for next year's funding, we would need to have our recreation plan in this year by December. Because of the steps that are necessary, I'm recommending that we begin the process almost immediately. And one of the steps is I need authorization for the township board to proceed. And that's what I'm requesting tonight, this morning.
Thank you. Any questions?
Make a motion that we approve the Parks and Recreation Plan Authorization Request. A second.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Okay, Letter G, Police Department Ordinance. There he is. Got this one?
Well, actually, I thought the clerk had this one.
Oh, that's funny.
The clerk has this one, that's funny. This is, was requested through our attorney's office in reviewing our ordinances. And it's simply an ordinance that provides that the Macomb County Sheriff's Department shall serve as the township police and also gives them the ability to write tickets on the township's behalf. Since we are already under contract with the Sheriff's Department, this is just to make our ordinance book reflect what we are doing.
I can hear the number four, but unfortunately, I'm on the sheriff's order. Okay.
I make a motion. We approve the Police Department Ordinance recommendation by our attorney's office and allow the Macomb County Sheriff's Department to do what they need to do in writing tickets and the violations.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion?
May I just-
Yes, ma'am.
Say that for record's sake, that would be Part 67, Ordinance 15.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Clifford.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Honald.
Aye.
Candell.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Letter H, Comcast Contract Renewal. Clerk, give this one also.
Sure. This is our renewal for the Comcast agreement. Our attorney's office has reviewed it. There is really nothing that we can do to change this agreement. So our attorney's office has recommended that we sign and return the agreement as presented.
Thank you. Keep the motion.
I will make a motion that we approve the Comcast contract renewal. A second.
Motion by Treasurer Honald, supported by Clerk Candell. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Letter I, P-Rol Services Outsourcing. Attorney Recommendation, please.
I can address this, Mr. Supervisor. It is our opinion that payroll services being outsourced to the private company just protects townships from any possible liabilities or shortfall. It also puts the township in a better position to handle things like Pay and Medical Leave Act, which is soon to be changed in the state of Michigan. It makes everything more efficient and again, much safer from liability standards.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That will fit into our budget, I'm assuming, as far as costs.
I think it pretty much has to. We have to make it fit into the budget. I guess I'm looking at this as probably beginning of the fiscal year thing because I'm going to need time to outsource it, one. And number two, it's going to take them a little bit of time, a couple of weeks anyway, to get all of our information together in order to start. So it would probably be a first of the fiscal year so we can work it in the budget at that time.
Which is right around the corner.
Which is right around the corner.
Thank you, Len.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion for the attorney's recommendation to outsource our payroll to a company once, that's the case, who we will use at the beginning of the fiscal year.
A second. Motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Trustee Clifford. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number 11, Public Comment. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Jan Hartway. I want to go back to item number C about the limestone program. This is more of a question. Why is it just three miles? Because when fall was setting in and we were heading towards winter, I had noticed then that the roads were the worst I've seen them in many, many years. And I knew we were going to have a problem all winter, which we did. I mean, I'm sure there have been a couple axles broken this year.
Was your question, why the three miles?
Why is it only three miles that we're allowing?
I can answer that very, very simply. Typically, it's only two miles. We ask for an additional mile that is allowed. And it used to be when other communities didn't take their mileage or their miles of road, it's 10% cost to us.
Okay.
The cost, which we're trying to get under is the 10% spending of the total program cost by the township. The county assumes 90%. If we want anything additional to that, it's 100% cost to the township.
Yeah, that's, I can see where you're going with that. Okay.
Correct.
And that would be, I'm assuming, thousands of dollars.
Yes.
Yes.
Do we, do you know the total cost of the mile that you can't-
$222,000.
So that's what we-
Per mile? Extra for if we pay-
Is that total for three?
That is total for three because our-
So break it down in the thirds.
10% on those threes, $22,000.
Over $22,000?
A little over $70,000 a mile, approximately.
That's what I missed, that amount. Where did you go? So our 10% was $22,000?
Our 10% is $22,275.
So like you said, that would be a little over $70,000 a mile additional that we really have to spend.
Okay, well, thank you.
No problem, no problem. Yeah, we try to get the maximum amount we can out of that 10% cost. Yeah. Cam, did you have another question? Okay.
Well, I just have a question. Does the Waste Management or anything, like, give money or anything for the roads to keep up? Because their trucks-
Waste Management gives us quite a bit of money every year for what's called Pine Tree Acre Revenue Fund that we use for services for the residents of the community.
Along with the gas that's going down on 29 Mile Road, you get anything from, like, the prison, the monax, like, it's towards the roads?
The state facility, that's a state facility for the prison.
Well, what about the substation or whatever that is on 29 Mile Road? Do they pay anything for their semi up and down 29 Mile Road?
No, they, just like anybody else gets to use the road. They pay taxes with their licensing and stuff to use the road.
I mean, their trucks are awful. They're up and down all the time. They fly, they, so where do we go with that? Do I got to put in a complaint to the-
Like I said, if there's traffic-related issues, Macomb County Sheriff, most definitely. Please give them a call and they'll look into it. If there's trucks that should not be going down that road, that's, that's what we call. Thank you. Any other public comment? Number 12, then.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn at 9:39.
9:44.
9:44.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Clerk Candell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.